Back in old west days they used to pistol drive them one of those.
You put that on, that's a little bit of a paddle on the side. They had hand sprayers. You guys need one?
Yeah.
Two of them. You guys get in a situation where you need one, I got one right there. Seventeen, eighteen thousand feet.
You know, I didn't realize that it was hilarious as a whole up there for that. They actually make police.
Yeah, they make them for where you can bring people out of the woods, extended beds with like I call them scratch wrap and a board on it.
Don't get them mixed up.
Must be from that cleaning tool. Have you tried yours yet? Have we're gonna use those on the culvert there at the shop right next to the oldie shop. It's plugged, it's it's a good one to pry it on.
What is it?
A culvert cleaning tool.
Still on the front of it.
They're like forty six hundred dollars a piece, but if you clean out twenty culverts, I mean you've you've paid enough for having to replace them, I mean.
Did you get it yet or did you?
Yeah, yeah, we both got one. All that happens, they usually just plug up on both ends and the middle's open, you just.
Or people burn next to them and melt them.
Yes. But the the old ones used to have, it kinda had had the points on them, so I was worried about them with plastic culverts. These are rounded.
Yeah.
So they go in flat.
They're preloaded, they go in like that.
And then when you pull them out, they open up.
Yeah, I see these preloaded ones.
And so these are rounded where they won't tear up the plastic culverts.
That is pretty neat though.
Yeah, that's what they look like.
Right.
They got different spades, they'll do twelves, fifteens, eighteens, and twenties. I mean, that's a pretty wide range of sizes.
Did it reshirt that culvert?
Yeah, there's a and also a piece that you can stick in there and pry up on it to open up the ends of them. The plastic one, they.
They'll snap back.
Yeah, they'll just come back to shape usually, but them metal ones, which we're trying to replace out all them when we get a bad one, but.
Thank you.
You were trying to place the.
Well, whenever they go bad, we're just, you know, they've got ridges in them and them things that hang up in there, but them plastic ones, it worked, it worked awesome on those.
Yeah, fifteen inch culvert.
There was a chain there we wanted to put in.
Fifteen inch one will carry, fifteen inch plastic will carry what an eighteen inch metal will. They don't have the ribs on the inside.
The easiest thing on them is them chimney sweeping tools. Slide one of them through there and hook on a rope on it and pull your chain through, but we've tried to clean them that way or shove a log through them and it just pushes the material.
It almost needs something like a really skinny thing that wouldn't pack it.
You don't wanna have to go through a different site.
They almost need to build fires in the end of the pipe and call the fire department with their pressure hose.
It's like a dusting. What did you do with your old jetter? They have a trailer mount they do.
Yeah.
It worked good.
Yeah, that would work good.
Because my little jetter, I mean, I can do a pipe that big, it'll clean it clean.
I figured it would have had some sort of thing.
Well, those jetters, those jetters have got a head that spins and it and it nicely covers, it'll make the whole inside look brand new. If you get it, but you gotta be able to get, it'll shoot water forward to help it break it up, ease it in, then when you pull backward, it'll get off.
How many gallons of water does it use to clean them?
They got to dig that trailer mount, so I think it's five hundred gallons anyway. You could also put the.
Sorry, gun on it.
Let me tell you right now, you don't touch nothing with them.
No.
I've seen one of the guys say it wrong one time, one of the guys hit the trigger and it hit the skin.
Oh, yeah.
If the skin went out there full of water, all we got is skin.
I've got a thirty one hundred PSI one there at the house that's got the zero, I mean, it's just, it's a man and it'll.
See, my water machine's a forty five hundred.
Sure will.
My my jetter's a forty five hundred PSI.
Yeah.
Oh, gee, don't tell you. I I don't do the holes like for your fence, you don't need a post hole digger, you just take that, you take those, you take about any of them, not really. Let the ground hit it, it'll just keep digging down the ground, digging the ground, and then you put your post there, just pour your concrete in with the water that's in there, brace it and leave it.
What do they call it now? Hydro excavator?
Yeah, that's what I put my mailbox in, that's what I put my mailbox in, you know, what I'm doing with my fire washer. Sister and dug the hole all the way down real good, yeah, full of water, I set my post in there, poured my concrete in there and just braced it up and walked away.
I don't know why something hadn't been done on that already.
Been up there now for sixteen years.
I don't.
But that's, that's the easy way, that's it.
When I built our pole barn, that's when we dug the holes, come out, had a guy dig the holes in it and then put those plates at the bottom of them, set the posts on it and then just put in dry.
I just put on a big glove, I greased down and pulled these big rocks out.
Fill in the water and the moisture from the clay, the ground and everything else, hardens them up.
Yeah. Oh, like you said, bag of concrete outside in the rain, it's hard as a rock.
There's more than.
Throws the moisture out of here.
Yeah, that's what he, that's what he said. So, yeah, if they can, if they can take it, we will. If they know, I don't know why something hasn't been.
No, it's just. What year truck?
Two thousand Chevy Silverado, silver.
Oh, it was four.
Yeah.
I think that's.
I know, there's a spare tire in back and everything in that thing.
Fifty thousand, I guess, probably.
I had a picture of this somewhere.
Yeah, I think I have a copy of that.
Mom, well, yeah, I'm down for.
That's what I told her, I was like, I got one on my life with fifty, I don't want to say it, or when you can figure that out later.
Yeah, that was by my shop, see if it's one I got.
I appreciate that.
Nothing here for you. I'm gonna find a tailgate.
Yeah, the red one.
Hard times when we still have tailgates.
At least they quit taking the catalytic converters, usually.
Ah.
You just park down there six mil, put your boat in, come back and your catalytic converter was gone.
Well, what I, you know, running a sawzall underneath the vehicle, I don't think you could hear the safety cam off the gun, I mean, I don't think I can. They gotta have nerves of steel, I I just don't get it.
Somebody, you don't know how they do it without making a racket, every time I try to cut one at the shop, it just.
Yeah, now when it gets to almost the other side of that little pin, breaks your blade.
They can have one off the car.
I can't find any little one there either.
All you have is, do you ever look at Gate Road on GPS?
Uh, no.
When you're on the concrete, it's thirty five miles an hour, when you hit the gravel, it changes to sixty miles an hour.
Well, that's fucking how that happens, yeah.
Why are you driving so fast here?
That's what it changed, guys.
Well, that's.
That's what it changed, guys.
That's what happened.
That's what it changed, guys.
Well, that's.
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 That's what it changed, guys.
At this point, we'll call the regular kind of kitchen order, sir, if I have a form, consider giving a payment of the bills.
I'll move.
I'll second. I'll be there.
Aye.
Here it up. Back in old west days, they'd use a pistol to drive them one of those.
You put that on, that's a little bit of a title on the side. AI hand sprayers.
She has a need one.
Two of them. She has getting in a situation where you need one, you decide to go for the rest.
Seventeen, eighteen thousand feet. You know, I didn't realize that it was hilarious as a whole up there for that. They actually make police.
Yeah, they make them for where you can bring people out of the woods, extended beds with like I call them scratch wrap and a board on it.
I don't get them mixed up. Must be from that cleaning tool. Have you tried yours yet? Have we're gonna use those on the culvert there at the shop right next to the oldie shop, it's plugged, it's it's a good one to pry it on.
What is it?
A culvert cleaning tool.
Still on the front of it.
They're like forty six hundred dollars a piece, but if you can clean out twenty culverts, I mean, you've you've paid enough for having to replace them, I mean.
Did you get it yet or did you?
Yeah, yeah, we both got one. All that happens, they usually just plug up on both ends and the middle's open, you just.
Just gotta get the end open on it. Or people burn next to them and melt them.
Yes. But the the old ones used to have, it kinda had had the points on them, so I was worried about them with plastic culverts, these are rounded.
Yeah.
So they go in flat.
They're preloaded, they go in like that.
And then when you pull them out, they open up.
Yeah, I see these preloaded ones.
And so these are rounded where they won't tear up the plastic culverts.
That is pretty neat though.
Yeah, that's what they look like.
Right.
They got different spades, they'll do twelves, fifteens, eighteens, and twenties. I mean, that's a pretty wide range of sizes.
Did it reshirt that culvert?
Yeah, there's a and also a piece that you can stick in there and pry up on it to open up the ends of them. The plastic one, they.
They'll snap back.
Yeah, they'll just come back to shape usually, but them metal ones, which we're trying to replace out all them when we get a bad one, but.
See you guys later.
Oh.
Thank you.
You were trying to place the.
Well, whenever they go bad, we're just, you know, they've got ridges in them and them things that hang up in there, but them plastic ones, it worked, it worked awesome on those.
Yeah, fifteen inch culvert.
There was a chain there we wanted to put in.
Fifteen inch one will carry, fifteen inch plastic will carry what an eighteen inch metal will. They don't have the ribs on the inside, they're.
The easiest thing on them is them chimney sweeping tools, slide one of them through there and hook on a rope on it and then pull your chain through, but we've tried to clean them that way or shove a log through them and it just pushes the material.
It almost needs something like a really skinny thing that wouldn't pack it.
You don't wanna have to go through a different side again.
They almost need to build fires in the end of the pipe and call the fire department with their pressure hose.
It's like a dusting. What did you do with your old jetter? They have a trailer mount they do.
Yeah.
It worked good.
Yeah, that would work good.
Because my little jetter, I mean, I can do a pipe that big, it'll clean it clean.
I figured it would have had some sort of thing.
Well, those jetters, those jetters have got a head that spins and it and it nicely covers, it'll make the whole inside look brand new. If you get it, but you gotta be able to get, it'll shoot water forward to help it break it up, ease it in, then when you pull backward, it'll get it off.
How many gallons of water does it use to clean them?
They gotta dig that trailer mount, so I think it's five hundred gallons anyway. You could also put the.
Bring a gun on it.
Let me tell you right now, you don't touch nothing with them.
No.
I've seen one of the guys say it wrong one time, one of the guys hit the trigger and he hit the skin.
Oh, yeah.
If the skin went out there, had full of water, all we got is skin.
I've got a thirty one hundred PSI one there at the house that's got the the zero, I mean, it's just, it's a man and it'll.
See, my water machine's a forty five hundred.
Sure will.
My my jetter's a forty five hundred PSI.
Yeah.
Oh, gee, don't tell you. I I don't do the holes like for your fence, you don't need a post hole digger, you just take that, you take those, you take about any of them, not really, let the ground hit it, it'll just keep digging down the ground, digging the ground, and then you put your post there, just pour your concrete in with the water that's in there, brace it and leave it.
What do they call it now? Hydro excavator?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I put my mailbox in, that's what I put my mailbox in, you know, what I'm doing with my fire washer. Sister and dug the hole all the way down real good, yeah, full of water, I set my post in there, poured my concrete in there and just braced it up and walked away.
I don't know why something hadn't been done on that already.
Been up there now for sixteen years.
I don't.
But that's, that's the easy way, that's it.
When I built our pole barn, that's when we dug the holes, come out, had a guy dig the holes in it and then put those plates at the bottom of them, set the posts on it and then just put in dry.
I just put on a big glove, I greased down and pulled these big rocks out.
Fill in the water and the moisture from the clay, the ground and everything else, hardens them up.
Yeah. Oh, like you said, bag of concrete outside in the rain, it's hard as a rock.
There's more than.
Throws the moisture out of here.
Yeah, that's what he, that's what he said. So, yeah.
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 What year truck?
Two thousand Chevy Silverado, silver.
Oh, it was four.
Yeah.
I think that.
I know, there's a spare tire in back and everything in that thing.
Fifty thousand, I guess, a bubble head lights on it.
I had a picture of this on there.
Yeah, two thousand thirty. I think I have a tubby you can have.
Mom, well, yeah, I'm down for it.
I mean.
That's what I told her, I was like, I got one on my life with fifty, I don't want to say it, or when you can figure that out later.
Yeah, that was by my shop, see if it's one I got, or not.
I appreciate that.
I've been here for you. So, I'm gonna find a tailgate.
Yeah, the red one.
Well, yeah.
Cat eyes.
Cat eyes.
Part of times when we steal a tailgate.
Yeah. At least they quit taking the catalytic converters, usually.
Ah.
You just park down there six mil, put your boat in, come back and your catalytic converter was gone.
Well, what I, you know, running a sawzall underneath the vehicle, I don't think you could hear the safety cam off the gun, I mean, I don't think I can. They gotta have nerves of steel, I I just don't get it.
Somebody, you don't know how they do it without making a racket, every time I try to cut one at the shop, it just.
Yeah, now when it gets to almost the other side of that little pin, breaks your blade.
They can have one off, part of the thing, like, I can't find any little one there either. All you have is, do you ever look at Gate Road on GPS?
Uh, no.
When you're on the concrete, it's thirty five miles an hour, when you hit the gravel, it changes to sixty miles an hour.
Well, that's fucking how that happens, yeah.
Why are you driving so fast here?
That's what it changed, guys. That's what it changed. It was like sixty miles an hour, you go twenty miles an hour. It's nothing new all, but. On GPS, it tells you how like. It goes from thirty five on the pavement. And then when you hit the gravel, it it turns to sixty mile.
Isn't the speed limit on from all county roads fifty five unless posted?
Twenty five.
No, according to state law, it's fifty five unless other work. No, it's all fifty five unless otherwise.
Our order is posted all county roads with twenty five.
Okay, well, we had an order, but according to state law, everything is fifty five. Yes.
Our county, we've considered twenty five years. And like something like.
Somebody says it'd be great if they just beat to fifty five. I I've been about run over on some of these roads.
Well, we get requests for speed limit signs and I said, look, we can put them up, but they're as good as a person that obeys them. Yeah, I mean, it just. But if it's not up, then if they get caught, you can't do nothing about it. So. Um.
We just keep it.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. Did you? Why isn't?
Has this total got today's sales tax on it? Probably not, it doesn't.
No, no, I got today's sales tax. Sales tax just came in today.
Yeah. Yeah, but not today's. No. Yeah, if you don't care.
You said you had today's. Balance sheet. I, yeah. It'll be.
They don't have titles.
I had my autograph.
Cause that's all mine.
That's it.
It's an option now.
Yeah. Well, say you can't get them though.
You can't get them. Yes, it's about.
Yeah, I had a razor down there. Yeah, probably the title for it. Yeah, you had a title, but razor. Both players, you do voice and thank you. I bought one. I titled it. So it was mine.
Yeah.
Well, yes.
Oh, insurance, you don't need a tongue.
Well, that correction, yeah, they're not even required to have insurance. I don't drive my own road.
What?
UTV.
Yeah, you are.
According to the sheriff, just looked it up. It's you don't have to have it.
Check ordinance.
Well, he just looked at it.
You must have insurance, a flag. It's all has supposed to be all of it. Everything that's on the road, we pass that one.
We were just discussing that, that all of that said, we're ATV.
UTVs were different.
Yep, UTVs were different. So you might.
You wanna do anything, drive a UTV up down the road, but a make UTV you do.
Oh, we were just discussing. You know, that might have been. That might have been before all them came out too.
Yeah, that's what we were talking. That's what Doug.
Ricky was here. Ricky goes, well, it happened because the police was chasing one of these guys. And the guy come around the corner and hit somebody in their vehicle. Like they they'd have insurance.
But that day was soon.
Yeah. That's when it all started. So requiring to have insurance.
But yeah, it's.
See, the farmers are insured that their farm is on theirs. Maybe that's why we didn't do it too.
But yeah, that's uh, we were just looking at that. We just literally had that conversation. It might need to be revisited and edited.
Yeah.
Yeah. We had, uh. Four kids and one on Y highway here a few months back overturned right there on right front of the house. Lucky none of them got hurt, but they was fourteen, sixteen years old. Had all all their friends from the neighborhood in there. It'd be side beside beside beside. They had. They had, I don't know, there's four or five of them in there.
Well, in five years of being in office, I've had five UTV deaths.
Yeah, there.
Outfall of factoring.
You know, parents showed up and they flipped it back up, drove it away from the scene, but uh. And what I don't understand, they'd ask permission when the helicopter there in the field, they said one of them's hurt bad. Well, then all of a sudden. Helicopter wasn't called off and one of this. They was fine. So I don't know what happened there, but uh, I told them, do what you ought to do. I mean. Uh.
Get up. You're all right. Get up.
Yeah, just walk it off. You you'll be not be all right when you get home. Yeah. But.
Did he mount the good foot?
What does it say?
Yeah, they're they're dangerous to not handle correctly.
Well.
Which you would think you'd be ordered.
I was coming out of the hospital one day for a checkup. The guy that walked in with a T shirt that looked like he'd been to a grinder. He was chasing cattle and went to a bar bar fan. And he was. All bad shape.
Yeah.
I don't know how he walked in there on his own, but he was, yeah, compared to the hip is just bad.
It's all ATV.
We jumped in ours.
It's all ATV.
Took it down the highway. We were running about seventy. Uh, boy, it don't seem like it's seventy. It's still on common. It was really about thirty miles an hour.
Yeah, my truck one day got switched and I looked down. It was like a hundred and sixteen. I'm like.
What the do this two thousand eleven. Twenty eleven dash.
I brought donuts. Hey, you're welcome to some too.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, we're gonna change it. Cause when we did it, it was two thousand and eleven.
Well, it takes a tank that you guys all those.
Yeah.
They did.
Yeah. Will amend the ordinance.
Great idea. Give these guys something.
Well. And it also protects the people that can't. Don't hit them.
So my question, how are people registered under one without a ID? So it's made clear over the county selling.
Well, that title deal just started what how many years ago? See, it was before this. Or after this.
Anything over than twenty points, you gotta be titled or something.
Mine's a twenty fourteen and I want I wanted to title it mine. I mean, I've got a title for my ATV, but.
Yeah, I don't know about. Trying to force the county ordinance on. Something that you don't have to have to the state. So if you if you're not required to title one, I don't know how we can.
You can't you can't take away from a state ordinance. We can.
Like a stricter, yeah.
Yes, we can make it stricter, but we can't.
Yeah.
But we can't take away.
But then we're.
You're infringing on the. Yeah, their ability to. Basically be free by having it. By having to title it. I see what you're saying.
If you title it, you got a big tax on it.
Oh, here, wait, states in here is.
Yeah.
The ATV application, you just have to have the owner to make the model, the serial number and color.
Anything under fifty inches in width. Has to be titled, even if it's a sit-in, drive with a steering wheel, UTV, they have to be tied.
Under fifty inches.
Over fifty inches. If it's over fifty inches, then they're exempt from being tied. If if they're being used for agricultural purposes.
Well. Flare's razor with thirty fives on it. And lowered and everybody else.
She has a whole reason. People have me. And right on the road and then.
You guys can't require them to have insurance, get a permit. Yeah, they are. They are.
They have to have required to have insurance. You wanna read it? Read it.
Doesn't it say UTV? Just a.
ATV.
Michelle. May.
I don't have one of either, so I'm okay with it.
It just goes over everything that you're required to have and. It's basically copied off the state. Only thing we added was the insurance and. Something else.
The county tag.
Yeah, the county tag. And by the way, that you know, if they're insured, they have to.
Does it say that they have to carry that proof of insurance upon uh, request?
Actually, they have part of the registration.
So if they drop their insurance, is their permit still good? Ask them, where is this permit? Permit's for a year. I wish they had to show that they still got it. Sure, but you know, you can buy insurance and go out and start a plan and never pay any more.
You tell you what, buy it by the law.
Yeah, pay pay three months or whatever.
Talking about vehicle registration is what you're talking about. That's same same deal. Yeah.
How is this UTV any different for that?
That's right.
And they're bigger. They they had one up there.
Five thousand dollars. Oh, I know. Four door, pulling closed cab, air heat.
Very very big. My wife's boss got one. That run that run ninety mile an hour. And I wrote in that thing. It's got heat, air, windshield wipers. They've got everything a vehicle has. Radio.
To spend that kind of money to take a ton of.
He didn't like his. Wanting to have his phone.
He doesn't.
He goes farm to farm in it.
He showed me one up there. It was fifty five thousand.
Yeah.
For a side by side.
Yeah, it's it's a vehicle. Yeah, it looks like.
I'm telling you, if you get in it.
Thing, pulling closed cab, electric or or leather seats.
Yeah.
I mean, air and. Small H one covers that half the gun all the time to top two. Now, that's entirely possible.
Cause he got three farms within nine miles of his.
Yeah, he does.
He just, yeah. You know. I wrote one time, but that was never yet. He got on that highway seven two to pick off.
I think we need one. Should have used for one several times. You had two. Yeah. You still have one now.
I always told him, just call me. Mine always said it only had a hundred miles.
Oh, you do. You're one of us. You guys bring it out. Yeah. You ever get out or make it available or whatever.
They'll be three years old. They'll have a hundred miles on them.
Do you have a trailer for it?
Well, I mean, it's just a standard trailer that we've got. We hold culverts on.
Yep, just all.
All you guys just.
All right.
Single axle trailer.
I've got a single axle, but it's.
We put in for a grand one yet?
I got a ten sixty six trailer and use it.
Uh, it'll, well, we just put in for the number, so we would. We put in for fifty thousand for one, so whatever. But Polaris has a full.
You want that egg on roll up another?
No, but Polaris has uh, policemen, so they're upfitted for with bikes and feds and all that different stuff that you can do with it, so.
Yeah, I wanted the EMS one.
They'll be back wherever you want. I found that out here. We go. Yeah, they got ones for fire. It's got a big old long extended vent. It goes out the back from like a few years old.
When I was at Fort Wood, they had one of the six by six, had four wheels in the back. It was a Polaris. And we'd run trees up there over it, just file them over, you know, but it had a. Skid. But they'd be taking them out there and getting them. Well, I'm using them for a year on a demo type thing, you know. They'd drop it off. They'd say, you guys tear it up, let us know.
Oh, yeah.
Got the drones now too.
Have you guys staying in the jail lately?
Yeah, I went back the other way. Wide open.
Nothing in there anymore.
One big room.
Old jail, not the old jail, not.
In one big room now.
And you brought that up.
Roger, bring it up.
I'd actually put it in my little man in law.
One big room.
Don't know what's going on.
Roger, have a big office in.
I don't know.
It's clientela. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. It's our picture because we don't have it updated in the knowledge sheet but that. In the system, but that's the accurate numbers I have, so. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Have you got Charlie's number two, the new emergency?
Yeah, he's got Hector's.
Oh, does he have Hector's phone?
Uh huh.
A month ago, I should put you this. And finally take it back. I see. Since our meeting now, Seema pushed the button. And it'll get our. Eight hundred thousand or whatever it is.
It's you're gonna go up there and do this.
It's all been cleared through the feds and it's all been. Got on our end.
Depends on the state's fit that money in or not. They gotta re put it back in the copper cause they got. Well, we're in August, so they already got the new one.
I'll move to see if he'll make sure he stays on. Or if he can give me the person, I'll stay on him either one. Is that right?
That's his person. I just have to change it by two, so.
Where where's this?
Yeah, I didn't.
This is dying breath. These are all.
That's the only end of the road. They see he's still in our name. He's still in our part, I know.
My first daughter, we borrowed money. I'm telling you right now. I mean, that was sad. That was sad. I got down there and go, what? Yeah, we came down fifty two. No, we had like seven million. They borrowed money to make payroll. I was like.
Don't be dark.
Yeah. There you go. The full picture?
Yeah.
Um, the twenty two thousand, is that right?
Yeah, twenty two eight eighty six.
Yeah, that's for those uh, people except for the. But there was still a couple. But there was still a couple thousand. I wanna say it was back. We used about eighty percent of it for repeaters and then we just.
Well, there's twenty two something left in it right now.
Yes. Have you been seeing the side by side comparison on tax revenue?
I think I am.
Side by side comparison on. This one?
Comparison to the general revenue?
No, what is each month?
Yeah.
Have you been watching that?
No, I didn't.
Cause there's. Quite a bit.
Yes.
Each month more than what they budgeted before.
You know what?
It's, each month has been out quite a bit from what they were budgeting for.
Oh, we had fifty one month and we said he had nine to ten thousand each month.
That's what you do. That's why I tell them, please.
Budget here, no one's probably gonna be here. Sometimes it'll go all the way up here.
Well, what I'm saying is it's here, hopefully September, you're gonna get a request for, for those.
Was the budget in running?
No.
Hmm.
It's over, it's what I'm saying. Laughing about.
Messily.
We can send you.
Is it?
Dale, did you drink my coffee?
Is it the law enforcement tax?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll let it yours anyway.
Yeah, I know.
So we're, um.
Put it, you put it wherever you want to.
Well, well.
Well, we have to tell you where we put it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
You have to, what you have to tell them.
But there's no request, yeah.
But, but they, what I'm referring to is they said that they only wanted to do one amendment.
I got three different line numbers that, that, um.
Yeah.
Not all of it, some of it.
Yeah.
But you'll, yeah.
Yeah, I can do it anytime through.
Correct.
As many times, but what goes to state only goes once.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what, that was my interpretation of what. You can do it anytime during the course of the year, it only goes to state once. That's the same thing that you got there, so. You have any questions for me afternoon? Uh, I'm gonna go check on your deal this afternoon. I'll let you know about that.
Alright.
Did you work to a prosecutor's office yet? Did you get this one out here?
I did not. I got my hand received in there that I gotta take down too.
They're asking you. Put up a weight limit sign on the Cboro Bridge. I thought they wanted fifteen to.
I'm on fourth night of the week. I don't go on a road, I'm on this road that says no more than three quarters tons.
Hello.
Three quarters, you shouldn't drive one ton truck.
So. When we have somebody that's being paid. They pay that person, or we pay to the county. They pay the county and then that person gets paid. We have one that's about to start being paid on the opioid. The opioid committee, that's what it.
Uh, the, uh, our, our C, uh, CRO, our community resource officer will be a part time. Uh, part time, we leave the sheriff's office. He's already.
The money would be paid through by the county, but reimbursed through. I would see.
That's what, that's what we're trying to figure out.
The opioid committee is going to pay his part time salary, so it should come from the opioid committee. We turn his time card.
Right.
Well, we. So we turn the time card into opioid committee.
No, 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 no. You're turning that as a regular employee.
Yes.
Where you reimburse through the.
It'll, it should come up as another line item as being, if or paid through, through them, but we need to onboard him. For that, cause he should start this month. We need to get it into here. Okay, so we can get it all figured out. Uh, first by third. Well, it actually went to the opioid committee last year and the money don't even sit there and they don't even budget for it. So it was something that was taken last year.
We should have put it in this year.
It was in there. The, the budget, the money's in there, the budget's in there. Why not if it was in there? And opioids budget for it.
Yeah.
But no, tell me, so tell me, but. Tell me, but. One two three on your budget, you put it in your budget, but over on the revenue side, you would put opioid. Money and it would match.
I didn't know if they turned their budget into you guys, is what I meant. So hopefully you just wanna pay hourly salary and then. Yes, yes. Yes.
But yeah, when you do that.
I'll email her.
Opioid does do it revenue, that's totally something. You have to put it in your budget. And showing that the income's coming in from opioid revenue.
No, they have to give us like a bill for it.
No, no, the only thing we do is paper transfer that.
You'll go to Mac and Mac will check to you. Or transfer.
Right, he'll bring in one for me to sign on for opioid to.
Get me something that has all the details as far as.
Yeah, we'll need all that.
Yeah, we're saying.
Now we'll be ready.
It's just like the, the, you can't work over a thousand, is that right?
Three hours a month.
Okay. I will. Is the proposal for what he's worth? Will that work?
Yeah, yeah. Get it over to me, I'll look at it. And I just got something from the. Operation. Paying the salary of my guy. So I haven't been able to print it out, we can all print it out, bring it up and. They wanted to know that I got a look at his previous ASM, see what his overtime. Average overtime on a lot of hours, I mean, this is a dangerous amount. After I can download.
The way you go through the dealer.
They're working on it right now.
But I told you, they wanted your number and I gave them the number out of.
No, they didn't.
Every one of them do.
Why they calling?
Yeah, it's boring, right?
He's really?
Yeah.
My windows down. The window coming to the house. Well.
He needs to wash that.
Probably can open all the doors in them, which is.
You'll have to fix a leak in your van when you get. I know, they never, they started over there whenever. Had a bike, a little bike.
They called me one day thinking you could bring your tractor. You're gonna go, I, you gotta talk to them. I don't know where the tractor's at, that's their, that's totally different side of the camera. You say, yeah, we'll see these guys over there, no, don't look. Else thing. It's not true.
Try the coroner's comment, King of the County. Try the coroner's comment, she thought you were King of the County.
No. Do you feel like the officials are on? Donut King. Oh, I'm gonna call this. Yeah, what's that gonna call it?
My own boss. Staying at a pound.
You're the donut king.
Donut king.
Fifty five thousand boss.
Exactly right, we all got, you're right, we all have that. Oh, yeah, I gotta call him, so. I have a forty five minute conversation with him. You're the one, we have no authority in that. Either, just. Nudist, that's the nudist.
Always on Smokey.
Well, she said south.
No, it's Smokey.
But she's talking about nudist people out there where people can see them and.
Yeah, apparently they.
Wingers groups and.
Yeah, they.
Damn, I said that would be sheriff, cause if it's Indian, I don't think I'll go protest against you, like, it's in decent.
Sheriff and the conservation.
Sheriff and conservation.
They call, they call.
They've called your.
Yeah, but I don't, they wouldn't have, I mean, I don't get called at home for a row of froggy, I mean.
Yeah.
But it's. What I meant, I, I've been called by no one about anything out there.
They're talking about stopping floaters coming down through there, they're talking all kinds.
It's, at the end of, it, it's the end of Smokey Road. I don't know if they're actually affiliated with campground or it's the gravel bar there by the campground, but. There was quite a bit of nudist activity.
My year got. Forty five minutes. Yeah, trust me. She go, I go, man, we don't have fighting in Johnny, but I said, when you talk, people running around, they get out in the county, I said, now that becomes something a little different, the sheriff can handle, I think. There, I mean, I'm not up to date on all the laws on, on that, but I'm pretty sure you can't just run around and get out.
I, I do know the laws because I've had two in copper.
Can run around Buffalo, so right. In Missouri, is that?
What?
Let's find out.
Not that I know of.
Is that allowed at the lake now?
Remember the lake to settle under private ownership, it's a facility company. That's a different situation. And it's not Plasky County.
No, I know that.
What's wrong with you?
You all kind of seem.
Roger.
Please keep, sir. Please keep for sure.
Lady named Tom, they called me, got her brother or someone who lives in the property, or she lives in the South River, and I'm like, come over here, and these people. Right around, they can tell they can't do this, this and this, and they'll, they own that gravel bar top in the middle of the river and. I go, oh.
Yeah.
That where they posted it. Yeah.
I could all my drone out.
You know about the situation.
Yeah, that's what I was looking up to here because they had it posted that they was gonna. It was just that. Yeah.
Who owns?
Well, see, that was, that was the. The guy that owns it's from out of nowhere. But see, that was the deal where the guy saying that he owns the gravel road instead of the county, cause he wants to shut the gravel road off. To the gravel bar. The county actually, the county owns all the way to the river and we've.
He's going the other side. Right, and if it was a Ford, then you own it.
Yeah, it's Ford, it's.
If I remember, the other Ford.
Yeah.
The other Ford we had in here that time. And.
But we didn't own the other side.
The course said that it was a road through. Down the road. The killer rings here's the one who went through all that and they got all the.
To the, to the river, we actually own, we actually own to the river there, but we don't own on the other side. Now here, on the Smokey, we own on the other side, it's actually a gravel road on the other side.
Yeah, these people. No. That lady said it. Yeah, she's telling people, don't blow through here, there's a bunch of nudist out here. So maybe something here that may stuff it in, dude.
I know they, I know they called Casey and Casey went out there.
Yeah, Casey was there.
Casey's there.
Was this last weekend?
Last year. It would have been a week before last.
I just got the call. I wanna say Monday or Tuesday, eventually.
Jean, this predates you, the other commissioners may not know this, back when Bill Ransell was presiding commissioner, it was actually an attempt to create a nudist camp up near Crocker. This came close to not being just a minor problem about fifteen years ago. Uh, the issue at all was that a woman bought some property up near Crocker and thought that she could run a business serving soldiers that spent time in Germany. Uh, the Greek recession killed that plan, which is probably good for everybody. But unfortunately, I know the boss had this pretty well, I had to do a lot of research on it. Jean is right that if you can, if you can see the stuff from another property and you offend a person who doesn't wanna see it, there's a crime involved.
Yeah.
What you do in private property with Benson, the state can't get involved in.
Correct.
So the complication. So the complication you get involved in is that federal land and public access locations are iffy. There are states that have taken advantage of ambiguity in federal law to allow things on federally owned beaches that Missouri probably would not permit. So some of the stuff you hear involve states that have deliberately decided that they're not going to get involved in areas where there's some ambiguity.
It's supposed to rain, so I thought he said spotty. Yeah, twenty percent of it's spotty.
Oh, I could, I could have told you that, they're up there digging them soft spots up on London Lane trying to asphalt them today, so yeah. There's number eight.
I forgot, Jean has some personal knowledge, he got, he got a call out to the Forty Acres Club down, down, down South San Luis decades ago. To do some plumbing work.
Yeah, I'll never forget that call.
I forgot that Jean actually does know about this stuff.
Yeah.
But people know there are four illegal places and disagree.
It's in St. Clair, it's in St. Clair, the mayor. She got a call, works on a water truck, gonna pull up the front great gate, it says, nun is gone, and I'm like, oh. She got a call, it works on a water tank, and I pull up the front gate, it says, Luna's gone, and I'm like, oh. I called my brother and he started dialing, and he goes, you didn't know? And I go, no.
They were telling me, hey, you gotta get a bit down like your door, I gotta, hey, man.
I'd put a whole play on that, man.
Well, I will tell you this.
Yeah.
You could have called that.
Kinda like Chase Butterfly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could have called that fact and disorder. No. Yeah, she was, that lady called. She was nice, she was, she was nice through the whole conversation. She's just trying to figure out what they could do.
Yeah.
Thompson, wasn't it? She's, she was the Thompson family, they on both sides of the road, Johnson, that's it. Holy crap, look at that.
Pretty good thunderstorm.
Well, for Spotty, they showed this morning on the news, that sure ain't Spotty. Look like the whole state's going up. It all dissipates within two hours. Well, I told him to get ahold of you on that, cause I didn't know. On my job, I work in the middle, I try to work with you and elected officials responsible for it, whatever we can do, we'll figure it out. That's about, I'll call that counselor in the middle of working the thing and people and elected. But I, I think their only avenue would be taking people out there would be. That, as far as the roads are rolling. I don't know if that was just a group that showed up for that weekend or if it happened all that, I don't remember.
I know that, I think they had had it posted that it would, it was, they was gonna have an event like that.
No kidding.
Yep. Yep, it was on. It was on Facebook, on their, on their page. Yeah.
On Froggy's page, I'll be darned.
They, they had it posted. Have a new, all, all nude float trip or something like that.
Jean, let me ask a question because this is legally important. Uh, is any of this national forest land for these activities were going on?
Private land, I believe.
Yeah, private land, yeah.
Okay, but it was visible from other people's.
People floating down the river.
On the gravel bar in the middle of the river.
Gravel bar in the middle of the river.
Okay, that's, those are key legal issues.
I also told her to call the Thor.
That's why Sheriff loves me to vote.
I'm just surprised you don't have one with the rivers in the county.
We're kinda getting one. Federal, uh. Federal surplus to pay.
State surplus, they want to get rid of boats. State surplus, the state gets their boats all the time.
Not personally.
We should go up there.
Yeah, they get in their boats, some of them are there.
I've never been in.
Buy them, I don't have to buy the federal surplus.
I'm, I've got stuff whenever I work under Sharp, I mean, they bought stuff, tools and stuff there for us, but I've never been there.
I've been through there. You need to go through there, the tools.